All right, seeing that it's 7 o'clock, we'll open the meeting of Zoning Board of Appeals, March 12th, 2018. Let's see, meeting minutes from April 27th and February 12th. Let's do the February one first. Anybody see any changes, deletions, additions, subtractions? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of February 12th, 2018, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of accepting the minutes of Monday, February 12th, 2018, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. All right, we'll move on to the minutes of April 27th. Anybody have any changes, additions, deletions?
Motion to accept minutes of Monday, April 27th, 2015.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion that's been seconded to accept the meeting minutes of Monday, April 27th, 2015, as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's all passes. What's that?
I wasn't a member then, so I'll pass it.
All right. Okay, it's just been on our agenda, that's all. It's the minutes hour of April 27th, 2015, and it says February... April 27th, 2018.
Oh, sorry.
So, I didn't know which one was correct. I wanted to make sure which one was... This is correct.
Right. What can I leave?
All right, what else do we have? Let's see, correspondence, Planning Board memo, site plan for J&amp;V Auto Sales, 631 Ponset. To the Board of Health, Highway Surveyor, Conservation, Building Inspector, Water Commissioner, Town Clerk from the Planning Board, 220, 2018, Site Plan for J&amp;V Auto Sales, 321 Ponset Street. The attached site plan for J&amp;V Auto Sales to be located at 321 Ponset Street. Assessors' map, 63 lot 17, was submitted for review on February 20th, 2018. This plan was drawn by Webby Engineering Associates, Inc., owned by Walter Ferreira, dated 12/15/2017. The plan depicts a proposed used car sales lot with new garage to be used in the future for light auto repairs. Please review the plan with your opinions or concerns until later than March 14th, 2018. Thank you for your cooperation. Where are we? 321 Ponset. Where is 321 Ponset?
I don't know about this one, but isn't Walmart here yet?
Oh, okay. All right.
I got one of there. I want to put a garage on us. 320, right?
320, 1 Ponset.
Crossing back.
What garage are you parking in? Approximate location of existing SAS. Existing concrete care.
40.
Oh, proposed 40 by 25 Garage.
You know, landscaping company, they're in that?
Well, yeah, it's pretty much... Well, it was...
No, it was a...
They had trucks though.
It's a new Walmart, yeah.
Didn't they come for a special permit? We gave them a certain number of cars that we have.
He sold the house.
Wasn't it the same? Oh, it's a different guy.
They're going to tear down the house, or did you ever put a garage?
The garage. Here's... This says existing house here. Proposed garage over here. It almost looks like it's the... Oh, this is the driveway here going in.
I mean, is it the same driveway?
Proposed physical vehicle, the sales display area, looks like it's... With a sign. The back of the building looks like it's 30 feet from 1 Ponset.
I don't think that's a building. It's just that...
It's just a... Yeah, it's a sales display area. Let's do it.
40 by 20?
What's 40 by 20?
40 by 25.
Oh, 40 by 25.
Old garage.
What's the owner?
It's the business.
How many... What's the square footage of that?
Just about an acre, 40,000.
One square footage of the garage?
It's a thousand.
Thousand square feet. 10,000 square feet. No, it's a thousand square feet.
What's maximum?
Eighty-eight, I think, right? Something around there.
24 by 36, so that's... So you use special permits?
It's more... It's got a... It's an existing house, right? They're going to need a special permit, I would think.
Right, it's... I believe it's a percentage of the first floor area of the existing house. And there's no dimensions on that that I can see, so I don't know what that is.
That whole lot is more than an acre, right?
Just an acre.
Just under, yeah.
Forty thousand.
He came in to get this special permit for cars there. For selling used cars, right?
Yeah, the guy, the previous guy.
Right, yeah.
Right, so they're going to have to come back here, out of his own.
Money goes to the garage, yeah.
Yeah, and if he wants to do the cars, out of his own, right?
And so this right here would be the entranceway to Walmart?
Oh, yeah.
Which is 10 feet from the side lot area.
It's pretty close. The only guy that I've approached.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because we are pretty specific on that.
It kind of goes along with that.
To Building Inspector, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Selectman Assistant. Class II license. The selectmen have received two applications for a class II license from Walter Ferreira of J&amp;V Auto Sales for the property located at 321 Ponset Street. A hearing date has not yet been scheduled. You will be notified when the date and time has been determined. In the meantime, please advise the selectman's office as soon as possible whether or not you will require any stipulations based on this permit and confirm this is allowed in the zone which the property is located. Thank you for your help and attention in this matter. If you have any questions, please contact our office. Yeah, they sent that to the building inspector. There's some kind of explanation written here. Love to make sure we... I think that was one of the things that Rob wanted to discuss. Love to talk with him, the building inspector, but we'll keep them posted. He's already been notified of that by the selectman, who's copy sent to him. All right, where are we?
She's not here yet, so...
All right. Selectman memo, okay, we did that one, we did that one. George Williams, motion to strike improperly filed documents.
It's a while, but...
Yikes.
Can you read all that?
End of the Electronic and Air Clerk's Office, Land Court, divorting Gordon Andrews versus Robert Gannick, Siya Nizarella, Peter Parcellin, Robert Dergan, and Gerald Boye as members of the Town of Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals, and Robert Picarelli, as he is the Building Inspector for the Town of Halifax, and Corey S. Merritt, Amanda Monte, and Edward Johnson as trustees of the party trust, and civil action, 17 MISC 000507. Enclosed hearing for filing in reference to the above titled action, please find the following. Town of Halifax, Zoning Board of Appeals, and the town's Building Inspector, Robert Picarelli's, motion to strike the documents improperly filed by Andrews in connection with a motion for summary judgment and in violation of a previously filed motion and court order which issued in the municipal defendant's request for oral argument with exhibits 1 through 5. Oh, thank you for your attention. She just filed it, so... Oh, I thought we might have a judgment or something here. This is just a copy of what she filed. Oh, Kim Salat, by the way. So, good to know. This was February 21st, received 2018.
Not going to jail yet.
Not yet.
Oh, yeah.
She also requested a copy of petition 823 of Madison State, so I sent her all that.
Kim do?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
This is already passed, but...
This is what?
Part of it. Sorry. Over.
Oh, the agenda?
Yeah.
For the old colony planning council? Okay. Let's see if anybody wants to review that. Oh, is that? That was good. It's good to check my... What else do we have? Violation letter from Zone Enforcement Agent. Officer Fam Family, 395 Plymouth Street. This is the old red farmhouse. We've been discussing regarding 395 Plymouth Street, Halifax. There's 1, 2, 3, 4 parties notified on this. Dear Sirs... This is submitted, by the way, by Robert Picarelli, the Inspector, the Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer. Let me read this quick since we're going to be involved with this. This is a notice of enforcement on the chapters 167, 18, code of the Town of Halifax. Based on your letter of intent delivered to this office, 21418, and your recent correspondence with this office concerning 395 Plymouth Street, a determination has been made that you are currently in violation of the use and conditions at 395 Plymouth Street in Halifax. Everybody knows what we're talking about, where we are. This office can find no evidence of any approved or accepted use showing six dwelling units, parentheses apartments, at 395 Plymouth Street. The zoning information on file concerning this address indicates that on 612, 1968, the Zoning Board of Appeals approved and issued a special permit. That special permit recorded as special permit case number 14 to quote "extend a nonconforming use of said premises from two apartment dwellings and a store to four apartment dwellings," unquote. Was issued by Richard and Barbara Harrison. Was issued to Richard and Barbara Harrison. Based on this information, I determine you are in violation of special permit number 14 as applicable in 1968 in chapters 167-2, 167-7B, 167-8A, B and C, 167-19, and 167-20. You are hereby ordered to cease this use immediately under chapter 167-18B. You may be fined under chapter 167-23. Violations and penalties, not more than $300 per day for each offense. Each day that such violation continues shall constitute a separate offense. If you wish to pursue this matter, you may appeal the Building Inspector's decision by filing an appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals on the chapter 167-21 within 30 days of this decision. This was filed and received February 26th, 2018. Thank you, Robert Picarelli, Inspector of Buildings, Zoning Enforcement Agents. Copy sent to the Board of Selectmen, Zoning Board of Appeals, Board of Health, and the Fire Department. I'm sure any application or anything submitted thus far?
They... No, we haven't received anything yet, no.
Okay, all right, good to know. Where are we still at? Okay, Planning Board members, site plans for review. River Street, proposed solar array. To the Town Clerk, Building Inspector, Highway, Board of Appeals, Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, Fire Departments, Water Commissioners, Conservation Commission from the Planning Board, site plans for review. The attached site plan was submitted to the Planning Board for review on February 27th, 2018. The plan is a proposed solar array to be located at Zero River Street, map 117 lot 1. Please review the plans and review your questions or concerns by March 30th, 2018. Plans will be available for review for the Police Department, Meeting Room 1, second floor. Thank you for your cooperation. Terry Reno, Secretary, Planning Board. Okay. Well, we can... I don't know if we have time to look at this now, but we can review this. Zero River Street, so it must be on 1 Ponset end?
No.
No, the...
Middle bar, right?
The middle bar, right, that's what I meant.
Yeah, by 105.
That's the lot that they created, right?
Who submitted this? Isn't that Cumberland Farms property?
So the site which may not be named is a separate site?
This is where the Flying Club is, right?
Yes. And where that other proposed plant was supposed to be moved into that general area. What was it?
Which is not yet proposed, correct?
Oh, it was just...
It was just chatted about.
Chatted about. So is that the same lot, though?
No.
Well, they separated it out.
Different from the one on...
The other chit chat proposal is going to be next to it.
The very same. And this is beside, closer towards the...
Across from Pratt Street.
Oh, yeah, that's the... There is Pratt Street. Bingo. How many acres is this? It's going to be a good one.
Is there what size part that's for you?
The first parcel, they took up with what, 34 acres?
Is that what it was?
For that...
For this piece?
No, no. The first...
The other one?
The flying planes was 34 acres.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Is this the driveway for the... For the remote planes? Or is this one?
Oh, yeah, this is it, right here. Yeah.
Says here, total existing lot coverage, 15,000 square feet, .344 acres. Yikes. No, we can take a look at this. That's a lot of solar. Take a look at that. All right, Planning Board memo, Form A for 10 Thompson Street. 10 Thompson Street. From the Planning Board, Form A, distribute... Please find attached copy of Form A that was endorsed by the Planning Board at their March 1st, 2018 meeting. Area zoned agricultural residential. What's involved with this one?
It's in the house.
In the back. Or in front.
Middle Borough of Halifax, line is right there.
Then McCallum's be somewhere?
10? That's 12, that's 14.
All right, we'll have to take a look busy... Oh, yeah, that...
That's that house right around the corner.
That's not McDonald's, is it?
It's like White House ran on the town line.
All right, we'll take a look at that when we have some time.
Good segue into the first hearing for the second hearing.
Oh, good segue.
In right on time. Beautiful.
So mysterious.
Who's planning why?
Nova Machine and Design, Robert McLennan, P.O. Box, Halifax. Dear Mr. McLennan, this is from Gordon Andrews, Chairman of the Planning Board. At a meeting held on Thursday, March 1st, 2018, the Halifax Planning Board motioned for a waiver of a full site plan review from your request for site plan review to have a precision machine shop to be located at 413 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. 02338, map 72, lots 16 and 17. Property owned by Allied Realty, P.O. Box 1040, 43 North Wantello Street, Brockton, Mass. 02303. Planning Board grants this petition with a request for a sign for one designated handicap parking space with modifications that the handicap space should be compliant with all regulations. Motion by Mark Millius, modified by Carlos Scult?
Sculty.
Sculty. And seconded by John Soroka, all in favor. Please advise at all variance a special permit so comply with all rules and regulations and codes of the Town of Halifax. Okay, good to know. Yeah? Same one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, seeing that it's 7:20. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 30th, 2018, at 7:20 p.m. in Meeting Room Number 1 of the Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application by Robert McLennan for a special permit for light industrial use located at 413 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Robert and Michael Boer and Daniel Senet, trustees, Allied Realty Associates, LLC, P.O. Box 1040, Brockton, Mass. 02303, as shown on Assessors' Map 72, lot 16, title reference book 35062, page 299. The applicant seeks a special permit for light industrial use in the commercial and business district for use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the Town of Halifax under sections 167-7, Schedule of Use Regulations, Area Zone Commercial Business. Petition 875. Mr. McLennan?
Yes.
How we doing?
We're doing well, leaving.
Okay, if I understand this on the application, let us go. Let's move into this. Hold on. Standby. Nova Machine and Design, Rob Picarelli, Town of Halifax, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax. Dear Rob, this is a letter of intent to inform you that Nova Machine and Design of 500 Industrial Drive, Halifax, Mass. Is seeking a business permit for a property located at 413 Plymouth Street, Halifax. Nova Machine is a contract CNC machining company that produces small precision mechanical components that are sold commercially to all the companies. We do not engage in any retail sales or walk-in type business. The purpose for our move is to consolidate space for cost savings. Facility we are currently in is too large for our requirements. We have six employees, which include both owners. All our manufacturing activities contained inside our building. There is no activity that takes place outside except the loading and unloading of trucks, which is an infrequent occurrence. Our equipment is computer controlled, highly efficient, non-emission. The machines are all self-contained, quiet running, state-of-the-art precision equipment. The fluids we use are water-based and non-flammable. We do not work with any hazardous materials. All metal waste is stored indoors and recycled. We generate no liquid waste. The components we make are generally no larger than one cubic foot. All components are produced in small run quantities that typically ship via UPS. From Robert Picarelli. February 6th, 2018, Nova Machine and Design. This letter is in response to your inquiry for a zoning determination regarding the existing building located at 413 Plymouth Street and your proposed business move from your current address, 500 Industrial Drive. My determination, based on the letter dated 1318, and limited information you have provided is that your proposed business as presented would fall under the category of light industrial use, defined in 167-3 of the code of the Town of Halifax. You, the applicant business, are requesting light industrial use at the business zone property located at 413 Plymouth Street. Per chapter 167-7, Schedule Use Regulations, a special permit is required for light industrial use in the commercial and business district of the Zoning Board of Appeals. This proposed use is allowable only by special permit in the business zone, reasoning under 167-4B. The Board will have an opportunity to protect other uses in the surrounding area from potentially disruptive activities. In my opinion, if the Zoning Board of Appeals were allowed and granted a special permit, perhaps they might think about some binding stipulations for the use and future protection of the area if deemed necessary. Also, in my opinion, the special permit should be attached to the applicant business that is requesting the use on the property at 413 Business Street. Any future light industrial use at this location under a different applicant/business should be evaluated by the Board on its own merits as to whether or not it would be disruptive to the surrounding area. This determination is for zoning purposes only. Approval of all other applicable boards will be required sincerely, Rob Picarelli, Inspector of Buildings, Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer. Hi. Okay, so let's kick off some of the Building Inspector's concerns. Exactly what are the components? Are you...
This is my brother Bill, we're partners in the company.
Okay, and so again, what are we manufacturing there? You're... Where are you up at the industrial park?
Uh, we're between DMC Racing and Liddell.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've been there for 14 years. As far as I know, we don't have any issues with the town or anything. We make small parts, plastic, metal for other companies. Nothing retail, there'll be no foot traffic coming and going, none of that.
Any questions from the Board or anything?
How's operation?
Pardon me?
How is the operation?
Um, we're typically seven to five and maybe a half a day on Saturdays.
Noise levels, are they...
Everything takes place inside. We're not working on cars outside the building. Again, like our letter states, most of our parts are fairly small. I don't think it's...
UPS do deliveries? What do we have for deliveries coming in and out of there?
Uh, they'll drop off in the morning, pick up in the afternoon. We might have a truck maybe three times a month, three, four times a month, something like that.
Bringing in plastic, metal?
Um, no.
Metal?
Yeah, aluminum and steel, round bars.
Little footers?
Yeah.
So, do you store any stock outside, or it's all going to be stored inside?
Uh, it should be stored inside.
I did want to take a look at the building closer this afternoon. Did you have a nice loading dock there?
There is a loading dock, yeah. However, you are right on a residential area. That street right there is about as residential as you're going to get. So trucks coming in and out three times a week, three times a month? I figured what you said.
It's not... We might get something three times a week and then we might not get anything for a month.
Yeah, of course.
You know? It determines by our workload. We don't manufacture the same thing all the time. We do custom manufacturing for our customers' needs.
How many machines inside the building?
There'd probably be like nine CNC machines.
Six employees, so there's no more than six cars, maybe, you know, employee-wise?
Right, yeah.
I took a look at the facility list online. They can fit it in there. Put it in there, but that's my concern about the stock. Put it in there, but that's my concern about the stock is, you know, you don't wanna have piles of stock outside.
No, I don't wanna have piles of stock outside because of the price of scrap, they become very attractive.
And that was one of the other questions, is how do you deal with your scrap?
Uh, we have a company that we call that, um...
Yeah, but where do you put it?
We put it in, um, 55 gallon drums inside the shop.
Inside the shop, so that we know storage outside?
Yeah, no, no, we don't, we don't do that, again, for the same reason.
Only because it's such a rural area and there's a lot of neighbors?
Right.
And then in the summertime, I, I assume the place is not air-conditioned?
Uh, not at the time, at the moment.
Well, you're gonna get some noises if you leave the doors open in the summertime.
Uh, there could be.
Right, there would be a little bit of noise.
I don't, I don't think it's like...
A dull hum. If you have plow and livestock, you're gonna have a dull hum. So it's just a concern that we wanna make sure that it's not...
Okay, how do we determine that?
Well, we're gonna leave it open-ended and, you know, if there's a complaint, you know, um, they would have to remedy the situation. You know? Uh, it's, it's not like a press, boom, boom, boom.
Well, that's, that's white...
Right, right, it's, it's, it's gonna be, I do this for a living, that's fine.
I think your son might have worked for us.
Yes, I was just saying, I, I just asked him yesterday, many years ago.
Yes.
13 years. Yeah, now, it's, of course, it depends on the way the wind's blowing, they got the doors open, the wind's blowing, you don't hear a thing. But, um, it is just a concern that people would have.
I understand.
Because there is a residential home directly behind you, well, not directly, there's a, a lot of, uh, take it lot between, but nevertheless, it's not that far to the first residential home right there.
Are you gonna need an air-condition quality control room?
Um, I'm looking into the cost right now.
So it might be, you're out just to do the whole building?
Yeah, one of the reasons we're moving is to, again, cost savings. It's a smaller building, it's cheaper to heat and would be cheaper to keep cool.
You have four mills, four lades roughly?
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah, so it's gonna be fairly tight in there.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're leasing the building?
Yeah.
How lo, how many year lease do you have?
Uh, we're working on a five to seven year lease somewhere in that neighborhood.
So this, again, would need to be renewed every five years?
Absolutely.
Right, so that's, that's something you wanna know. That you'd have to reapply every five years.
Would you wanna just have a review as opposed to a renew?
Uh, we don't know, I don't know where it...
Well, that's, I mean, I think that's...
The word review is a little bit, you're just reviewing it, seeing what's going on, if there's any complaints, as opposed to renew it and they have to go through the whole process.
Well, that's what we said had happened last time. Was it happening?
It's usually a review.
It's usually a review. We were instructed that we weren't doing that correctly.
Because it was a different word.
Oh, okay.
If you stipulate it as a review, it's gonna be different than if you stipulate it as a renew.
He's got the, he's got the permit right now in Halifax, in the Town of Halifax. All he's doing is transferring from one building to the next.
Yeah, he, yeah, in the zone he's in, now he can do it.
He's allowed, he can do it no matter what.
Right.
So, so if someone lived on that street, summertime, wintertime, whenever, what impacts traffic-wise and noise-wise, if you lived on that street, would you hear?
Probably not as much as then what, what the other guy would do there.
Maybe, I mean, that's...
Oh, it'd be minimal. You know, there's just employees at seven in the morning coming from the main street, um...
Sales are up once a month, that type of thing, people, you know?
Yeah.
There aren't any traffic issues.
Okay, noise issues?
I don't, I don't anticipate any.
Would it be, because, I mean, that's 106, so I'm sure there's cars going all day long. So is it gonna be louder than cars going by all day?
I don't think so, no, I, I don't think so.
I'm concerned about those house.
Damn, how loud is the humming? Can you hear the conversation?
Well, you can hear the traffic, or that, nah.
From, from what I remember, because I was there many years ago, and from your description, um, you're not hogging all day long.
No.
No, you're not, so...
You're not what?
It's a machinist, it's a machinist term.
I love that.
It's not like, you're not what? It's not like a shipyard where it's like a cubic feet of, of steel, you know?
More of a precision.
Yeah.
I know, I know what they're doing, yeah. I looked on the website.
You hear the noise from a machine and not the cutting?
No, the cutting is what makes the noise. Um, if you, if you had a, had a tool, you would think of it more like a router, we call them end mills. If it was routering out material, you'd get a, you know, because it's making all these moves, but...
I think it's even less noise than a wood shop.
Yeah.
Because everything's, everything's happening slower because the, the materials we cut are not soft like wood.
Okay, is there any kind of heat or anything involved, uh? You know, any kind of vapors from plastics or anything like that, there's gonna be any kind of odors?
No, no, we don't use any.
Or anything like that, I mean, being in the industrial park is one thing, but, you know, tipping off the head of a residential...
If they're storing the stock and they chip inside, and if there was a, if there was a, a problem in the summer, because they wanted to open the doors to cool it off, they have a remedy that they could, as long as they knew that, that they would be responsible maybe for air conditioning or something.
Still air conditioning in the front office, isn't it?
I really don't think...
There's a provision for like a window air conditioner, they have, you know?
Well, the machines are off a lot of heat, right? The machines are off a lot of heat, so, you know, summertime, I mean, they're very, very warm. So, but I think if they're willing to address that and they understand the situation, I think we'd be okay.
I think the noise level for what they have versus an auto body shop would be a lot louder.
Yeah, the auto body shop, grinding is a lot louder.
Because you have a lot of impact wrenches going on, you're normally...
Well, let's do, you had employees with classic cars that are leaving rubber going out the street, buddy.
No, no.
Not like we haven't had that.
I would agree with that, like grimy and banging.
Yeah, totally different setup, yeah.
Okay, let me, uh, ask this, are there any stipulations that the, the Board would like to put on that we can have, well, have addressed here so that he can either agree or, or disagree to him?
I recommend that the stipulation is nothing to store outside.
That good with you? Because we put these stipulations on, you need to have to agree with them or, or withdraw your application. If you can't comply, well, don't feel your business can comply with it. I think that's a, I think that's a...
Unless, unless you would be willing to just throw it out there, the backside. Like, if you could just put some stock out there, it's not a hurry.
I would down...
Put a few pieces of wood out there. But if you wanted to limit it, just stock out there, that might help come out.
It's excessive. I mean, I didn't sound that for a little while, I think it's okay.
Or temporary, how's that? I mean, you put something out there for a, just trying to aid some room in there, you know?
I appreciate that, if I wanted to store something there, um, I would, I would ask for like a, what do they call it, a conex box or something?
A container, that, so it's secure.
Yeah, so it's secure and it's not like clutter and...
Yeah, that's like, I think that's a concern.
We had two of them out there, looked like hell to me for a long time, I swear to you. Remember with the auto body place?
Yeah.
You had two or three of them out there.
Yeah, that continued to kinda just grow.
It just, it grew out of...
People, you would have a car that several want to have restored, but in no place to put it, so part of that would be in the, in the storage box.
Where, where, in relation to the two roads that were stored? Were they?
The two roads, it was a, off an Indian path.
It was on that side?
Yes, right, so like where the loading dock was.
Is there room to put one on the other side?
I don't think so.
The trees are right there, right?
The what?
I mean, obviously, the need of your building is the better relationship you're gonna have with the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, no, we...
That's huge.
That's, that's the key thing, if, if they drive by, they may be able to live with a little noise if the place is looking great, but if you, if they drive by and it looks like crap, that noise is gonna start to really irritate them.
Yeah, and if there were complaints, the complaints are gonna have to be handled. And I think either they'll be handled through the building inspector's office or, since we issued the permit, would, would have you come back here. I, I think, uh, maybe that should be in there, that, uh, you know, any and all, uh, abutters or, or complaints would be, would be addressed by you to the, to the Board and the building inspector.
Were there any concerns when the certified letters went out to the abutters? That's kind of what I'm...
Uh, nothing came back as far as that.
I mean, the, uh, the auto body place, nobody ever complained about that?
I looked at the number, yeah.
I don't know, you know, the junk that was outside.
I don't know if there were any complaints in writing once in a while, just the appearance of it.
So if you want the noise level, they had no noise?
We, we have customers that come by a few times a month, maybe, and it would behoove us to show some pride in our facility.
Sure.
You know, I don't like it when there's a mess outside, it's, it's unsightly.
So can we give them a minimal, a minimal storage outside? Something?
Limited to the, would you say, to the rear and, and as a, as a temporary storage?
Well, for instance, they might have a, get a big job and, and they might have to buy, you know, 12 pieces or 24 pieces of 24 inch line, would be getting like a lumber supply, a load of lumber.
So after the job, it wouldn't be gone?
Yeah, and then they might have to be out there for a couple of weeks till the totes, they take away and it's gone. You know, that type of thing.
Temporary, I mean, I don't think temporary storage is...
I honestly don't think that's gonna hurt them.
I would, I would say, I would probably put a year review on that, where they come back in a year and we can have people come in if there's any issues. And then maybe hours of operation, maybe like seven to seven, since you're there till five, or something like that.
Yeah, it's...
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm getting older, I'm tired of working around.
So maybe do it seven to five, like it's a reason.
My brother's a few years older as well, I think he concurs.
How about any changes to the outside of the building as far as lighting or anything like that?
Well, I wouldn't mind adding a little security lighting.
Okay.
You know, I was thinking about some cameras to, uh, make sure...
As far as the lighting goes, uh, I put in a stipulation that the lighting would be shielded.
Okay.
You know, so that it would be limited, shielded down on your property as opposed to neighbors or...
I don't want it seen from the space shuttle or anything, and, you know, we'll, once we get settled, we'll probably be back for, just to put a sign where there's an existing one, nothing, you know, just so someone can find us if they need to.
And the zoning bylaws too spill out all over?
Yeah, yeah.
As far as signing goes and lit up and all that, if it's all spilt out?
Yeah.
So your own compliance?
I don't need that to conduct business, I, you know, take care of that.
Hours of operation? What do we have, uh?
Seven to five, but...
He said sorry, not any seven to seven, in case they're late.
Yeah, that's fine.
We have some employees that do come in a little early sometimes.
Yeah.
So you mentioned Saturdays.
It's one or two people and...
Generally, what they need is they need somebody, one or two people to come in and start it and then up and won't let up.
Yeah.
And then the whole crew comes in, so maybe we wanna say six. But that wouldn't be, that would just be pretty much warm and everything up, right?
Yeah.
All right, any, how about, uh, any other, any changes than what the machinery that was described? Like, like, I don't know, say they, they get into a different line, which required different machines, a lighter machine, so anything?
It would be good to put in there, but I don't see that being a problem.
Not if you're doing the same thing.
They'll upgrade the machine.
Yeah.
Like, if we ground them back in a year, that would be, any changes like that?
They'll take rid of an older machine and put a new one in.
Anybody else have any other? Of course, oh, you had the shielded?
The hours of operation?
Uh, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Monday through Friday and?
We do a half day Saturday morning.
Six to 12?
Yeah, no more than that, you know? Bill and I would linger around just to count the beans or whatever, you know, on a Saturday afternoon, but...
Uh, anybody see any, uh, need to limit anything else or any kind of stipulations as far as deliveries go? Number of vehicles on the property, are we all good?
Yeah.
Dumpsters and anything like that, and what about the, uh?
There'll be a dumpster.
What about the, uh, scrap that you were talking about?
Well, they're gonna store it inside.
They'll be all stored inside?
I guess what, what we wanna stipulate is they have, uh, temporary material storage outside, but nothing else.
So maybe say no storage outside except for temporary, temporary aids or something like that? But, does that sound?
Something like that?
Yeah, what happened?
Anything else, anybody else to think of? How's that sound with you guys?
We got a trash dumpster, that's...
Yeah, yeah, we do have a trash dumpster, which we lock.
But that's trash, that's not, that's not materials being...
Right, no, it's, it's just, you know, papers and...
Yeah. Should we put a stipulation in there about the containers? What do you wanna do, limited to the number, limited to one, limited to none? What do you, how do you guys feel? We talked about it?
Do you have storage in there?
Well, it's temporary, we said temporary storage, right?
Well, I thought that was... That's the material that you were describing, you know, for a particular job being outside, that wouldn't fit in a container, I wouldn't imagine.
Well, it could, it could, honestly, I'd prefer it because, um, for security of the material and I, I think it's gonna look, it would look better than...
Didn't you say you'd keep most of the stuff inside?
I'd say 95%, 98%.
Give them one, I would say one.
Do we limit the size?
What size would you need?
Oh, quarter mile. We have one now that we're gonna relocate elsewhere. I'm not sure how long it is, I didn't measure it. It's like a tractor trailer truck size.
Is it that big?
Is it 40?
Don't they, don't they come 20?
Could be, yeah, we could probably trade it for a smaller one.
Let's start out with that, how's that?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
You know what I mean, let's try that, and then...
How long is a stock?
The most?
The most we get, we get 20 footers sometimes.
Generally, when you get a 20 footer, you, you use it right away.
I hope so.
It's usually, most of it's 12, would you say?
Yeah, oh, yeah, typically it's 12 footers, that's...
How about, uh, how do you feel about, at least for the, until the first review is over done with one container maximum size of 20 feet? To be, to be reviewed? How's that, how do you guys feel about that?
I'm fine with that. Okay.
Uh, do we need to specify where that's gonna be limited to, or just wherever they can fit it on the property?
I think we'll decide back.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, we'll be able to use it.
Right, they gotta be...
By the loading dock?
Because that's not something that the planning board discussed.
It's not something what?
The planning board discussed, they did not discuss a container of any sort.
Yeah, let's do that, let's, you know, limit it to one 20 footer and see how that works out. We're easy, we can work with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else, anybody else want to add, delete? Okay, uh, anybody wanna, uh, go out and take a look at this? They've really cleaned the place up since, you know, since I've been by, it's incredible.
Oh, there were engine blocks and parks out there and, yeah. That's not what I want.
Yeah. They took a lot of stuff out of the outside, they were dumpster after dumpster, and, uh, they really cleaned it up nice. I don't know if you guys did or...
No, it wasn't us, but...
Take credit for it.
Yeah, sure.
It's just the different towers, you're in more of a residential area, so you have to keep mindful of that.
Yeah.
The more you keep mindful of that, the better it's gonna go.
All right, oh, yeah, so, uh, what are we doing there? Anybody, everybody familiar with this, or they wanna take a walk out there, take a look? How about the, uh, motion? How about the motion?
I'm gonna motion to waive the onsite.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and seconding to waive the onsite. Uh, voting on this is Kasiah, Peter, myself, Bob, Jerry, and we'd like your input, please. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, that just saved you thirty days.
Thank you.
Basically, what the board is down to, the long, the long and short of it.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Uh, it is the practice of the board that, uh, we do an onsite inspection unless everybody agrees that they're familiar with the property, you know, the, the layout and so that's basically bottom line. All right, how about a, uh, motion regarding petition number?
Eight seventy-five.
Eight seventy-five.
I'll make a motion that we accept petition number eight seventy-five and with regards with all the stipulations that we have.
Do you need us to read them off, you pretty, why don't we read them off, what do we have, please?
No excessive storage outside, limited to temporary storage. All complaints are directed through the billing department from any abutters. Um, shielded lighting outside, the hours of operation, six AM to seven PM Monday through Friday, six AM to twelve PM Saturday, and limit to one container maximum of twenty feet on the back side dock.
Dock area.
Do you wanna have a review in one year?
What's that?
Do you wanna have a review in one year?
I think that's a good idea.
Sorry, I'm jumping on your watch.
No.
Yeah, sure, motion.
That's all part of it.
Can you, you guys agree to that, can you guys comply with that? I mean, it's up to you, you know, if it's the stipulations that the board can put on and as long as you can, you feel you can comply with that, then that's great. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll, uh, take a voice vote. Kasiah?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
I vote yes.
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 Pass is five to zero to zero, and how do you feel on this one? Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Okay, uh.
Guys, good luck.
Thanks.
Guys, you guys.
How's Ben doing?
You have to register.
Whereabouts?
Out of Plymouth.
Oh, he must know a friend of mine. He's a prison guy as well.
Oh, okay.
Good to know.
I remember back in the day, you'd get such a trouble down there.
All right, there's a twenty day wait period, you know, appeals period, then you register down or, or give a, a line.
Um, right on the paper.
And it's all right on that piece of paper.
Yep.
All right.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Got a good bill?
What's that?
That's all set?
Um, yeah, the only other thing was, uh, that one, so. She didn't show.
Where's, uh? Where's Mr. Vinton? Vinton?
Vinton. He did not show either. She did send this.
He appeared. This, when did this come?
Um, December, I can't remember March.
March first. Building permit extension. Ken Vinton has my permission to discuss my renewal to the building commission for ninety-seven Circus Street, John C. That's all she dealt with.
Mm-hmm.
All right, okay, where, where are we with this, what's our status? She withdrew from the last time, so she reapplied and then didn't show. She did not reapply.
No, she hasn't replied. You were giving her time to comply. That was the last.
Okay, do we have any official correspondence from the billing inspector slash zoning enforcement?
Regarding this?
Yes.
No.
Okay, good. Let's, uh. Well, let's contact either, uh, Kenny Vinton, if he's gonna help her out and find out, uh, what the status is, if, if the, uh, if they're doing changes to the property and to comply with current zoning, uh, we need to know.
Okay.
Please contact the building inspector at your earliest convenience or the zoning board of appeals, I don't wanna dump this on Rob, but, uh. Yeah, pretty much dumping that on Rob.
It's a big backswing. It needs to come back to the zoning board.
And it'll come back to the zoning board, I'm sure.
Like, is it expired already or did?
Unless, unless she contacts Rob to say, I have complied, you can come inspect or you guys direct him to go inspect. It's gotta be reapplied for.
Okay, let's try that first and we'll go from there, is that okay with the board?
Yeah.
Guys, yes? All right.
Try having her just call or just contact her?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't have a phone number for Ken Vinton, do we?
Yes, I think, um, he wrote on his note, yeah, I do have a phone number.
Okay. What else do we have? Bill's payable.
Nope.
Thank you.
I will see you.
Good luck.
See you in the morning, dude. Oh, is that his stuff?
Ooh, ooh.
I'll see if I can fetch him outside. All right, good to you.
Okay.
What do we have?
This is a bill for the ads for the petition you just approved.
Nice. How are you doing?
Good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Any good news?
On what? In general?
Yeah. Good. Maybe you're going better than, okay?
Yeah, everything's going good.
All right.
Yeah.
No problems?
No.
Getting things up pretty quick, they're all good?
Kind of, it's the law thing.
Yeah.
That's why I asked Terry if we can.
Yeah, I, I, I got a phone call for, uh, Rob today. He wanted to meet sometime this week and, uh, discuss some in-law problems, deletions.
Are we still, the in-law apartment that, that in the past coming in, had a renewal or they have no applications?
Yes.
Why did we have to come in and sign?
Because no, we didn't get a, a new application.
This is for my new court.
With last name, we approved. They came in and said, yes, 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 yes.
Yeah.
We approved it, but it was only a renewal, but they did not put in a new application. But we had to come back over here and sign as a, a new application.
Right.
Which is why it was suggested that the word review should be used rather than renewal, so that.
So, on the old machine, we use review, right?
Yes, I will, yes, I did write that down, review.
So, I'm thinking, why would we want up there to, to sign this application when it was only a renewal?
Well, oh, when you had to come back in?
Yeah.
Because it was worded in the motion incorrectly that it was, um, a renewal, when it was actually a new special permit. Because they were getting a new permit under a different name. Because the mom had passed away, young Melissa.
Yeah.
Yes, cause that was.
Cause the people changed.
Cause it changed, changed the hand.
So, it's treated as a whole different thing.
Oh, I gotcha.
But all of them now have to be new permits, correct?
Unless you decide to do it as a review.
As a review, but under a review, can we get rid of the permit if they're not following it or can we just do the three hundred dollars a day?
Well, that's if you send Bravo.
Yeah, I mean. You sent Bravo.
Now, we're gonna get new senior center and all sorts of other things and CVS.
This is, uh, quite the, uh, project here you put together on, this is really nice. Included in, in our folders, yes, did we forget something?
No.
Did you catch them?
No, they were outside, it's in my office.
Okay.
Um, do you want me to lift the door and help you so it can go?
I bet you'll be back pretty quick.
Yeah.
You don't have a cell phone?
Well, I just called the cell phone, it's the phone that's here.
Do you wanna just leave it in the air or?
Yeah, do.
Yeah.
Uh, this is awesome.
I don't think I get that, do I?
What's that?
Wasn't that, what is that?
This is, uh, to the board of selectmen, planning board and the zoning board of appeals, proposed amendment to zoning bylaws regarding.
Oh, right.
In-law apartment, thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Uh, regarding in-law apartments, special permit review process. Nice job on that.
I've got that.
This is, uh, well, I'm certainly not gonna read this into the record, we, uh.
Well, you have, I mean, I just kept it in your folders from before, just cause it's still kinda being.
And these are, uh, different, uh, towns of similar size and circumstance that, uh, we have something to compare to?
Exactly.
Nice.
Terry and I need some research.
Good, guys, we should, uh, read that over because, uh, we are gonna be discussing this in, uh, in the near future, we're gonna be getting into this, so why don't at some point you guys bring that home and, and, uh, Peter will have a quiz.
It's gonna be wicked hard.
It will not be, uh.
Spell Ipswich. Incorrect.
There will be no curve on the correction.
No. I'm a mean, mean, mean old.
You kill like ethics, sir?
Yeah, there you go, yeah, we're not gonna sit over here and sell our stuff off.
All right, I'm all good, we good?
We're good.
We covered everything? How about a, uh, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Mr. Nizarella, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Good stuff.
Still aye.
All right, thank you very much.